All right, welcome everyone. This is the Mansfield School Building Committee meeting for Thursday, January 26, 2023. Thank you all for being here. We will call a meeting to order. I would just point out before we actually get started on our agenda that we have a new office assistant for the town manager, Alina Martinez, who is joining us today and will be doing the minutes for us and running the recording for us. So, welcome, Alina. Glad to have you aboard here. So, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the January 12, 2023 meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve? A Madison has made the motion and second, second by Mary. Are there any corrections? I do have one, Alina. It says on there, it's the approval of the, from the last meeting minutes, it says that we, the, the meeting minutes we approved in there was from the January 12 meeting. It was actually from the December 29, 2022 meeting. So, if you can make that correction. If there are no other corrections, then all in favor of approving the January 12 minutes, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Okay, then that's unanimous. Okay, then that brings us to the opportunity for public input. Is there anybody from the public that would like to address the committee? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on then. And that brings us to our contractor update. So, Al or Steve?
Well, we did get the certificate of occupancy. This week. Tuesday. We're working now, finishing up owner training and closeout. And punchless.
Okay, that's a concise report. Are there questions for, for Al or Steve? If anybody has. Go ahead, Steve. Just wondering what the timeline is for the, getting the punchless stuff wrapped up. Do we have an idea on how long that will take?
Yes, Steve, we're working on that now. Between substantial completion, which is also achieved, other than working out the dollar amounts, we've got 90 days for final completion. So, 90 days puts us before school occupancy, but we're going to certainly beat that with the rate that the guys up there are going. So, we're diligently working through punch lists as we receive them. Ty Sue's going to be coming there next week. I think Richard and Jeff to do a, do an update. Yeah, so I'd say between now and 90 days is contractually our responsibility to get done.
Hey, Chris.
I am curious, Steve, about, or Al, about what you might know as far as Eversource connecting the solar panels.
They are evidently, the eastern part of Connecticut has only one individual that sets the meters. We were told that they have the meter, but we can't seem to get a schedule on when it will be installed. The system was up and operational, but had to be shut down because we need, with that meter being set, it's called a PTO or a permission to operate, which you need from Eversource, and that has to come out of that meter department. So, we can't physically go get the meter and put it in for them, although we could, a licensed electrician can do it, they're in control. It's like they don't want to turn it on because they want to charge you for electricity.
Do you have any sense of timing based on?
I was told, I was told it was imminent and it may be this week, but I don't, I don't trust what they've been saying, so I'm hoping that we see it in the next couple to three weeks and we can get the PTO and get the system operational, so you guys can see the benefit of the solar system, although there hasn't been any sun in the past three weeks.
Keep that quiet. Al, and if you could do the same thing you did with the CO, when and if the thing gets hooked up, that you could send us all a note, that'd be great.
Any other questions for Al or Steve? In terms of moving along with punch list items, I guess that stuff is rolling along. If you want to make any comments on, on that.
I think it's, it's, it's rolling along pretty good. We were able, upon receipt of the punch lists from, from the Ty Sue group, we identified trade contract responsibility and have published those punch lists to the trades and given them a timeline for completion. A lot of, a lot of them have already reacted to what we knew that needed to be done, but some of the traveling contractors, getting them back engaged and getting them on the job.
Okay.
About, to, to your point, Randy, about 45% in our opinion, percent of the punch list has already been completed, and I think that's what Richard wants to check out on Tuesday.
Okay, sounds good. And then in terms of the gym progress, I know that the floor is in, it's, the, the finish is done on that. What other work is happening in the gym?
So, we, we put a schedule together for the remaining contractors in the gym. The gym equipment people are moving in next week. We've got another meeting tomorrow that Brian Grant is trying to set up with the block staining, manufacture people and Old Castle to truly get a handle on what more we can do, short of what they've already done. So, the gym equipment people are coming in next Monday or Tuesday. Their first actions are going to be adjusting the backboards and doing the things that, that don't affect the masonry work. We're still waiting on a couple of thresholds, thermal break thresholds. I mean, wall will be installed the first week of February. The balance of the gym equipment will happen after that. Shade installs are probably the first or second week in February. Final completion on the gym first week of March. Again, ample time. We're going to afford Mike Ninto an opportunity to come in and inspect it because that was one of his checkoff items for, for CFO. So, I think it gives us enough time to get things handled. We don't see any lead time issues with anything that, that's, we have the gym equipment, it's in storage, just a matter of getting it to the gym.
Okay. And the, the FFNE, what percent of that is done and in the classrooms?
I'm going to leave that for Adam. I don't know.
Okay, okay. Question. How's the, the repair to the sidewalk outside of the gym that, where we were getting that water issue coming in? How's that repair coming along?
We pulled the handrails, we put the handrails in temporarily to get a CO. We've now pulled the handrails, got the area blocked off because that handrail gets powder coated, about two weeks on that. And we're able to secure the trench drains. I think there's one foundry drain cover that we, we don't have a handle on yet. BB's lost their project manager and one of their assistant superintendents, so we're trying to backtrack into some of that work, but the intent is to have that all completed before school opens. Weather permitting.
Right, okay. Steve, the, as I recall from the CO, the only issue in the gym was the steps. Am I right on that, or is there something else?
No, the steps are all done. The only thing, there was basically nothing in the gym, other than he wanted to see it in its completed stage. Scoreboards up, the whaps in, and, and.
Basically to plan then?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions for Al or Steve?
Just, I think it's one last one. The lift, has that been dealt with?
The.
Lift in the loading dock?
Yeah, I think what we ended up doing, I think with Alan and Bill, we're going to take that lift, disassemble it, ship it to their facilities department, clean it up, repaint it, and shrink wrap it for them for use in another facility. They just didn't feel it function, function the way they really wanted it to function, and they were better served if it sat there, he goes, they are not going to use it. So, that kind of resolves that issue.
Okay, thank you. Ryan?
Sorry, just a couple more questions on, on the gym. So, what, what was the final solution ultimately, or do we have the final solution in place for the, the masonry block coloration? Did we arrive at a stain, a dark stain, I guess, that made that uniformly dark, or what?
Yeah, they started last Monday or Tuesday, started staining the block, and we're not all that happy with the results, and we're trying to set up another meeting with Old Castle to review other options. But, yeah, the work got started. Newfield's not happy with what they're seeing, so I think we need to take another step. And that, hopefully we'll have some other options available for Ty Sue to review after tomorrow. And we also have a lead on another company that can do the work that we've used in the past, and we've got them on standby for at least technical support.
Okay, and then, thanks, Steve. And the second question was, I just remembered, I think it was at the last meeting, I don't remember who, who said they heard it, or what contractor, subcontractor, but didn't somebody say that it was observed that there was an issue with the alignment of the, the backboards or something? Did that get resolved?
Yeah, the backboards on, on the stage side, the, on the short court, not the long court, but the short, the side court, are two and a half inches out of alignment. And they're on a, they're on a Ustrut type system. So, that's going to be one of the first orders when we come in. We've got the floor protected. We've got to get up there with the gym equipment people and slide those two and a half inches. Then they'll plum everything and, and, and we want to see them operate and, and drop the hoops down to the floor and plum them down to the lines to make sure we're dead nuts on that. That's typically what will happen, but we do know that two of them are two and a half inches off.
All right, thank you. Any, any other questions for Al or Steve? Okay, seeing none, then, thanks, Al and Steve. With that, then we'll move on to the architects update.
Yeah, I just conferred with Susan. I guess we are 90% complete, thereabouts, of the furniture installation. I think tomorrow, there's a meeting onsite regarding the OTPT room, fitting that out, arranging the furniture in that room. Tuesday afternoon, it will be Richard, myself, and Craig Raza doing a walkthrough to verify that the work, the 45% that Steve mentioned earlier was complete. Other than that, I think that's about it.
Brief reports today. Questions for Jeff? Go, go ahead, Chris, and then Tony.
Jeff, hi. Sorry I was late, everyone. It looked like there were quite some items from Craig still open. Some looked small, some looked bigger. What, what stands out for you as something we really have to worry about there?
Well, I, I got a heads up from Craig that there isn't anything really major at this point, but I called him and wanted to make sure that he was going to be there Tuesday, because I think it's important for him to walk through with us to double check all those things that you're alluding to. So, we'll have his punch list, our punch list, and we'll walk through and make sure that what's been done is done, what's not will get done. So, that's the intent on Tuesday, and if it has to go to Wednesday, so be it.
And I have one other question if I can.
Go ahead, go ahead, Chris.
Sorry, the furniture or the equipment, rather, for the sensory room, has, is that, is that onsite? Is that purchased?
I believe it's purchased, Susan. Quickly, the sensory room, all that furniture and stuff is, it's not installed, but we got it. Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Tony? Microphone, microphone.
My question was about the Color Ronin report that was in the package. You already talked about that.
That's what, that's what Chris was alluding to.
And there were awful long list of undone, uncompleted things there, and I couldn't tell whether they were serious or not.
Well, the thing was kind of confusing for everybody, including our office, and I spoke to Craig at length about this, is that there was the January 9th report that he had marked in green a date of 118, which had all these numbers associated. So, there was an assumption that that was the 18 report, when actually there was a 118 report that was shorter. It was, I think, 45 pages, and the 19 report was something like 90 pages. So, Color Ronin was in that report, starting to knock off things that Newfield had completed. So, I think with those two, we'll go Tuesday and check the rest of the 45% or more by that time, if Newfield gets things complete. So, ideally, the goal is that we can, between both teams, is make sure that we get this to, to zero, so that we can move forward and see the light at the end of the tunnel, finally.
I have a follow-up question. There was in that report, which I thought was the 17th or 18th, because there were entries for that, those dates. It says that Color Ronin acknowledged Newfield's report and said something else, but I don't know what it meant to acknowledge the report. Does it mean that they accepted Newfield's explanations, or that they just acknowledged that they received a report?
I'm going to jump in on that.
Yeah.
Mike can answer that too. Craig is, Craig has been pretty proactive with, with us, as our responses are given to him as promptly as we receive his reports. And when you read through the report, he doesn't necessarily close an item, other than saying he sees it completed, but he needs to verify it in the field based on our observations. So, when you read, like, there's like, even though it's like 50 pages long, one item runs maybe two pages worth of history, ultimately leading to saying, I think we finally got it done. Next time out, you can sign it off, hopefully. So, that's kind of how the report reviews.
Yeah, let me just add to that quickly. I'm, I got the report open, and for instance, here's one that's site visit update. This is regarding one item. Color Ronin acknowledges the contractor written response from 123022 is incomplete, but it's pending owner acceptance. So, they always add after that. They acknowledge the contractor's response, but in some other cases, they write documentation remains incomplete. So, they're acknowledging, you know, the response from Newfield, but whether it's accepted or not usually follows that. So, Tuesday, we'll iron all this out. We'll get through, hopefully, all of it, if we can.
Hey, Ryan. Yeah, I just realized, I actually meant to ask a moment ago, with the rains that we had last night, I know that, I think we had some, a couple of events previously, and the, there's a temporary solution, the stopgap for the retention pond, the excavated pit was working for overflow purposes. I'm just curious, I assume today it handled last night's rain okay, or? Anybody taking a peek? Al or Steve? I don't know if you have to look at the.
Well, I don't think there was any condition, hasn't gotten any worse because of the cutoff well that we dug, but it was right at the.
Right, but whatever, it, I guess the, you know, I'll call it the overflow, but that pit that was excavated, I guess it, it's continuing to handle what it needs to handle until the permanent solution's in place this spring.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's, I think that's the intent with, with Fossett O'Neil and Tom over there.
Tony, another question?
That reminds me, what happened with the door to the gymnasium? During all this rain, was everything okay?
Yes. Everything was good.
That's good news.
Any other questions for Jeff?
Hey. I'd just like to make a general comment on the reports and so forth. Jeff, I don't know if you have an opportunity for the benefit of future customers, perhaps. It would have been nice for us if Color Ronin did take off things that were closed, so that we didn't keep reading through them and feeling like, you know, I don't know whether some valve is done right, and I'm delighted that they can find it, but then I don't know when it's fixed or not, and, and then even that comment that you quoted, you acknowledged the contractor's comments, but we don't know what the contractor's comments were unless we happen to see a copy of that. That process is really frustrating for me, because I can't feel like I'm keeping up with something that's already challenging for a layperson to keep up with. The other thing that's, this is not to you, Jeff, this is in general, but or maybe to TSKP generally. We agreed to put in extra additional money because of the extended period for the design team. We did not give, and because you spent more time on it, but we did not give any extra money to the contractor, who has also spent additional time. You can't, you, you can't say, oh, they, they could have done it faster, this and that, when the supply chain is the issue. Yeah, they could have done some things faster, absolutely, but it's, it's irritating to me to have less and less feedback from TSKP when we used to get, I felt very good reports, good information, and then it suddenly stopped, even though we continued to, to, and agreed to pay because you guys were spending more time on this, because the contract was lasting longer than people had anticipated. So, I'm really, obviously, just voicing my frustration, but I'm, I'm frustrated by how this has, has played out.
Okay, well, I guess Jeff can take note of that and pass it on. Other questions for architectural firm? Okay, then we'll go to OPM update. Adam?
Good evening, everyone. So, as Al had mentioned, and Steve had mentioned, having the CFO is, is key. It's good, it's great, as well as nailing down substantial completion. We have that targeted for the 24th, two days ago. We're working through the documentation on that. There's, as you can imagine, given the scramble to get the CFO and check all the boxes, there's a lot of work that was done in the past several weeks to get the actual approvals in place. Now, it's just a fucking function of making sure that the documents align. So, case in point, Steve was talking about final completion. There's going to be items that are going to extend beyond 90 days, because Newfield doesn't have the parts, for example, like there's an AV component that's not coming until later in 2023. So, even though we've got, you know, substantial completion now and, and final completion and for some components before, before school opens, just want to make sure that we keep reiterating that there are going to be portions of the project that aren't done until summer 2023. And I think even one component, that small AV component, that might even be a little after. So, this is, this is going to be a process. We're working through it. TSKP's working through it. Newfield's working through it. But just again, want to keep reiterating that so that way, when schools open, the public come by and says, why, why is there someone working on the playgrounds in the summer of 2023? Well, that was a portion of how it works with the project. The, on the owner side of things from, from school operations, we're starting to have discussions with Peter and the administration team and the movers about how to work through which dates to get portions of the existing equipment and books and things moved in, as well as working with TSKP and the more prominently Newfield and the staff on trainings and getting, getting people in the building. So, now that we have CFO, it's, the building can be legally occupied. Now, the prep work starts in advance of the, the April start of school. So, there's just a lot of backend owner side of things that, you know, appear sort of invisible if you're just driving by it on the road. But there's, there's just a phenomenal amount of make-ready work, so to speak, between now and when school opens. So, that's something that we're working through. But by and large, I, I do want to, you know, share the kudos with, with the team on, I guess, especially the past couple of weeks. Sort of, it's a, sort of creating almost a problem for, for the documentation portion of things, because between the punch lists being developed, because there's a lot of things to track, and now Newfield's kept churning and getting some of those things done. So, now it's going back and trying to verify and establishing document dates and establishing dollar values. So, it's, it's good, the work's getting done. It just takes a bit to make sure that everything is being tracked appropriately and, yeah, have everything allocated where it needs to be, and everyone knows what the expectations are, and when, when, when work needs to happen, it's done so in coordination with teacher activities, and some of the punch list items are coordinated with some of the move activities and things of that nature. So, no one's stepping on each other as we're, as we're working through the last, last leg of the project. Any questions on any of that? And we got a PCO and some project invoices, but that's, that's largely updated now. It's, it's just a lot of getting to that last part of the finish line.
Questions for Adam?
Go ahead, Chris. Adam, you're the one that, that says it's done? Who actually says something's done when it's on the punch list?
Definitely not me. Definitely not me. So, the, the, the substantial completion process.
I mean, punch list items. I'm talking about punch list items.
Okay, punch list, yeah, so.
Talking about reconciling this with that, and it's all these little picky and things. What about going around with Jeff and Richard and Craig on Tuesday? Whoever does, check it off and say we're done, to just.
Rich, Richard, myself, and Craig will check it off and say it's done.
And that's, that's satisfactory to us, right? Okay, great.
Well, I, I would like to make a point typically is, is usually allow the contractor and their punch list leadership people to walk so we can understand, maybe we misinterpreted an item on a punch list and completed it the way we thought it was without any interface. Chris, I would ask that the building committee allows us to walk Richard and Jeff and Craig, so we can act like we did with Mike Ninto, that we act immediately to an item, so we don't put it on, back on the list, and it doesn't go back and forth between emails and reports.
That seems the most efficient way.
Ron it.
Other questions for Adam? Okay, then I guess we can move on to PCO and invoices.
So, I'll share my screen here. All right, so we have one PCO and then one, just procurement cleanup item motion that I put in the, in the packet in the Word file piece, the starting with the PCO, this is PCO 146R for $2,400. This is for hand dryers in the toilet room. The high level view on this is that there was hand dryers that were specified to be provided by the owner. So, those have been purchased through facilities. The invoice for those were approved at the last meeting, I believe. So, this is for the actual installation of them, which was not Newfield's contract to do. So, this is to have them do that.
Chris has a question.
Yeah, quick, I think, quick on this one. Was this always in the plans? I mean, is it, was it in this original specs? I'm curious because of the, you know, net zero impact, and if CMTA is aware of it, and this is normal to put in hand dryers.
That, that was the, the reason why this is coming in late. Jeff, jump in here if I'm incorrect, but the, there's, with many projects, there's also often a discussion with facilities about, you know, just having the paper towels versus hand dryers, and some owners like one way, some others like the other way. So, I believe, Jeff, this was always specified as a not in contract, intended to be paper towels, and then as we, we got closer to the, the finish line, the, the understanding was the desire to put in hand dryers. I can't imagine that would substantially impact the EUI of the building with occasional hand dryer use, but Jeff, you're muted if you're.
Yeah, it's definitely covered in the overall, because I, we talked about it early on, and it was going to be an optional thing, whether the owner installed them or not, but they were planned in the base project for the net zero.
Thank you, great. Rich, you have a question? Rich, you have a question?
Sorry, couldn't find the unmute button after all this time. Um, are they hands-free hand dryers?
I believe so. Uh, Alan's on the line and knows.
Yeah, they're the uh um. The acceleron, I believe that they use it like Amtrak and train stations and down at Grand Central Station, so they're heavy-duty industrial hands-free.
Hey, Chris McMo, question?
I I move that we uh approve.
A motion is then to approve PCO one forty-six. To install ten electric hand dryers. Second from Steve. Uh, all in favor, please indicate. Any opposed or abstentions? Hey, thank you. That's unanimous.
Uh, the second uh procurement item, there's no, there's no documentation with this. This is just a it's draft motion. Um, this is for an allocation of uh forty-eight hundred dollars um for a purchase order for the um. Copier mover people. So uh Jamie with Town IT has an existing contract with this firm. Um, so they were moving and storing and and maintaining the copiers, and then they'll eventually be moving it back in the building. One of the invoices is actually part of the invoice packet. Um, so but because there's an additional amount just to keep things clean, there was a separate motion to authorize that allocation.
Okay, are there questions on that?
Um, Brian, you may know more about this or you may not because of the timing of it, but this contract that we have or Peter, perhaps you know. Um, we have to do business with these people.
That's okay, we can worry about.
Pay to whatever it is. Forget it to company. The reason I'm asking is I wonder if a brand new company, not that we really do want to be. You know, divided into two companies, but a brand new company might come in and say, yeah, we'll take your copier business. And we won't charge you to put them in. We'll just charge you per copy now that they're, once they get in there. I feel like I feel like, and I don't know what the standards in the industry are, but I feel like. This is uh hmm. I don't I don't get it totally. Maybe it's just because they're relocating things, but are is it relocating? We're getting new stuff. What's happening?
Uh, Jamie could certainly uh give you more information, but I assure you, we've spent a lot of time looking. I add mitigating costs.
Adam, I think we're getting some feedback from your microphone.
So a lot of attention has been spent in terms of our contract with the vendors uh of the copiers. Uh, right down to how do we minimize waste? Uh, because in some of the lease agreements, we're paying per copy. Uh, so I can give you more information on it, but I assure you that we continue to look at it. It's one of our drivers in our budget, so we do pay attention to it. Uh, and we were able to save quite a bit of money when we shifted with this vendor. Um, but like I said, I I could have Jamie uh give you a little more uh details to that.
Um, I only am interested in making sure that we did do this. I mean, I again, my my thought was that another contractor might say, woo, new business. I'll 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 take this on and not charge the forty-eight hundred bucks. And as you say, it's a it's a costly piece of the budget. Well, that's a nice piece of income for these enterprises. So to get a get a set of copiers in the new building to start would be kind of a coup.
Right, uh, but it is one of many, and so we have to look at a bigger picture of of uh our vendors and and how we contract them. Um, but uh, point well taken and and certainly I'll circle back.
Great, but I mean, I'm all for going ahead with this concept that we have to do it.
Other questions? Is there a motion then to approve uh appropriate forty-eight hundred dollars to ACT Group? For copy and moving services? Chris McMo, is that?
Yep, I motion that we move.
A second? Rich, second, thank you. Uh, then all in favor, please indicate. Any opposed or abstentions? Okay, so that's unanimous.
Okay, and the last uh moving on, I guess, uh to invoices, there's something on potential changeovers. Um, I can I share my screen? So we have a invoice packet total for one million ninety-seven thousand thirty-three dollars and ninety-seven cents. Um, so again, the.
Adam, we're having some difficulty on hearing you.
One second.
Thank you.
Randy, while we wait for Adam. I want to. We have like a, what's our next timeline event? Do we have anything before school starts? We have to hit like in terms of like what we're waiting on? I know we're doing punchless stuff and all that kind of thing, but it's sort of like we have to be, make sure we get to this point or we cross all those hurdles.
Uh, there. The building is occupiable. Um, that's what the the CO means. So uh all code issues are are um in place. We're not a problem. Uh, and so now it's just a matter of of getting the furniture in. The few remaining. Uh, other things that, I mean, there are some things apparently for Colorado and that they have to check on. Um, but those should all be done before. It well, before we um want to occupy it for the school.
So punchless stuff is sort of cleaning it up and tying off the loose ends, but there's nothing that's going to prevent us from.
Right.
Achieving our move-in date.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Randy, along along that same lines, when does the town take ownership?
Um, maybe I'll pitch that over to Adam.
Yeah, so so with substantial completion, that's when the town takes ownership. So for example, I had a call with uh the finance director, Sherry Trainan, and. The kind of karma with regard to insurance changeovers from builders to underneath the towns uh uh property and liability insurance. Um, uh, we'd also had a meeting yesterday with uh town facilities and Newfield about the ever sort of bill and things of that nature. So. Uh, in in effect, the the town owners owns it now.
With the CEO, uh with substantial completion.
Substantial completion, yes. CFO is the legal occupancy, substantial completion is it can be occupied for its intended use.
So in fact, the town um is the owner now.
Yes.
Isn't isn't there something a little more formal than in effect where? I mean, there are issues of liability here as to who owns it, so.
Right, and so that's what, so I know Adam was saying he and Sherry, because we, Adam and I clicked on this a little bit yesterday, so we're just making sure that. Um, everything which we believe is in place is in fact in place from in in insurance liability protection so that there's no gap in any sort of. Coverage and the event that something were to happen, of course, we're not expecting anything to happen, any claims or anything, but. You know, the the billing for ever source purposes, the power bill, all that flips over to the town. Um, as of the day of substantial completion, so we're we're basic.
I'm sorry, good.
No, that that's it.
Yeah, so that that's substantial completion document. That's the formal component, and that's what the the. The normally this in a in a in a project where there aren't like long lead items extending things. Uh, this would be far more compartmentalized and the punch list would be uh shorter. There wouldn't be items extending on to, you know, months and months and months into the new year due to, you know. Supply chain, etc. So the document would be much easier to fill out, form out, sign and and have be done. Um, this, there's there's more nuance because there's trying to track which individual items are um to be done at a later date. What's that date? When do the warranties start? For those items that are not going to be complete um before school starts. So that document is is being reviewed. It's, you know, it's got the. The town attorneys looking at it, etc., um to make sure that everything makes sense and aligns and that the dollar value for the punch list on that document is is correct. Uh, but the the date on it is um currently the twenty. And so when talking with um the insurance provider, you know, ensuring that their lab policy um covers the gap in between the builder's risk insurance and the property insurance, which it. Which it will. So that's the um the formal document, if you will, on the transfer. It's just making sure that the document is is correct before it gets assigned.
Right, and then just to, because I know you've mentioned the date a couple of times, so the mayor may be a little, it's a little unusual, so. The date has been affixed to the to the form already, the certificate. The substantial completion date will be January twenty-fourth, which is already in the rearview mirror. The lead architect, Richard Sipick from TSKP, has not signed yet. They're verifying things, so when it's signed, it'll be. Substantial completion will be backdated retroactive to the the date that's already been affixed, so it's. Newfield has the peace of mind in knowing that substantial completion, the date isn't moving any further. But at the same time, Richard's verifying the things he needs to verify that substantial completion has been achieved, so. Substantial, the certificate has not been issued, but the date is known, so it's a little. Atypical.
I think I feel very strongly about this, that at the date, on the day when the building becomes the town's. There should be some kind of ceremonial acknowledgement of that, and it should be public. I don't know if you discussed this earlier. Um.
Don't worry, we haven't discussed it, but we're talking about it.
Okay, I I really think that we ought to do something. It doesn't have to be a big public ribbon cutting. It can be just a. Private ceremony with a with a photographer and a press release. But um, I really think that. For for the town's sake, we need to do this.
Yeah, uh, Peter?
Uh, yeah, so I, you know. Mixed emotions, right? We waited so long, and so we do want to acknowledge it. I think the complexity is. Um, thinking about two different parts of our community. Uh, that I want to make sure that we recognize our students and families and staff members first and foremost. And pivot to celebrating the beginning of a process. And I just worry about creating mixed messages with that. And so I, you know, we've shared messages and things like that, and I I agree. I think a press release is is. Completely appropriate and we should do it. There's been enough press out there about the building, so we want to do that, but we also want to do it in a way. That doesn't um lead to misunderstandings of what that actually means, you know, that there is a process with that. So uh Ryan and I are sharing information. We're thinking about how to best communicate with uh the school family community. Uh, and then also maybe create a shared uh acknowledgement of uh of the next step.
Right, so that's uh, that's in process. Like, yes. Okay.
So can I just follow up on that, though? If if we were to do that to Tony's point, um. And I completely understand what you're saying about the school community, but. As the the larger community, the people who don't get school communications, um. I feel like the people in the community that I speak to who are in that camp. Feel a little bit more out of the loop, so. When I understand what you're saying about timing and the messaging, but.
Yeah, they can be the same time, you know, we can push them out. I don't mean to create. Uh, you know, a a special date for them. It's just the information that I would share with school families is really kid-focused in terms of getting ready for events. And one of the things that I'm thinking about is we're going to do a campus walk and an open house for families. I can't invite the community just yet in that. That would overwhelm us.
Of course.
And there's going to be a lot of curiosity, so I want to be careful of how I share the information and who I am inviting to what events. But point well taken. I I absolutely want to include that. Uh, and I don't know if I've shared with this group, but we'll be sending out a communication as soon as we're officially officially in. Just to our neighbors who abut the land to do just a private, a tour with myself and my staff. In acknowledgement that they have witnessed this project. Some have been uh supporting and some have been challenged, and we want to be good neighbors. So to that point, I am thinking about the various stakeholders that we have, and I don't want to exclude anybody.
Great.
Okay. All right, then.
My audio okay now?
Partway through the uh the invoice and pay app. Um, are there questions that anybody has about that? Then is there a motion regarding the uh invoices and payout?
So I would make a motion to approve the invoice packet dated today, January twenty-sixth, including invoices from ACT, CES. C I R M A, Colliers Project Leaders, Hilliard, JP LaRue, Contractor, Con-tractor, ooh, if you say that quickly, sounds like a whole new word. Lake Shore, Langen, Pro Systems, Red Thread, TSKP, WV Meyer, and Weston and Sampson in the amount of. Two hundred and eight thousand seven hundred nineteen dollars and ninety-four cents. And Newfield's application for payment number twenty in the amount of eight hundred eighty-eight thousand three hundred fourteen dollars and three cents. For a total approval of one million ninety-seven thousand thirty-three dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Okay, is there a second? Steve seconds that? Oh, go ahead, Chris.
Adam, a question on your, on the Colliers, the two lines of Colliers that are exactly the same. Could you explain those? One is something and one is a reimbursement?
Yeah, if you notice, those two add up to the value on the left because they're separate purchase orders in one invoice. It's basically the twenty-eight eight hundred and then twenty-eight thousand of his approved for one P O and the eight hundred is approved for the other P O. Notice the invoice number is the same on the left.
One is reimbursable and one is not.
I see. Thanks.
Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second. Uh, any other questions? And all in favor, please indicate. Any opposed abstentions? Okay, so that's unanimous. Uh, okay, then that brings us to adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn? Chris, second from Mary. Uh, all in favor? And then you can um sign off and we'll see you next time.
Good night, everyone.